So we have an hearing today on a number of items. So like this hearing's in session. We'll leave a notice. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, on Wednesday, March 26, 2014, at 7:30 PM in Town Hall. 663 Main Street, Bolton, to consider and receive comments from interested parties concerning the articles to appear on the warrant of the annual town meeting, which will be held on Monday, May 5, 2014. The articles are summarized as followed, as follows. So I'm just going to refer to the article numbers, but you know, maybe a brief, that they have been published previously. So Article 9 and 10 are kind of housekeeping items related to the barn preservation by The first one is about, and this was recommended by Town Council, to move the bylaw from historic preservation to zoning. Article 10 is another bit of housekeeping. It's really about accessory uses within the bylaw. And just clarifying that bit, that you know, we allow this with barns that have existed before 1925 on a site, but not ones that have been moved on the site from another place in Bolton. Do we have any comments or questions about those?
So I'm looking at the attached warrant. And the numbers don't correlate. Which one's right?
The warrant would be correct.
Okay, so maybe we, our list is probably prior to the warrant being reordered. So we're talking about Articles 7 and 8, as opposed to 9 and 10. Just to clarify.
Does that number go all the way through?
That would carry all the way through then.
And the other thing about 8 that is an important clarification is that if we're adding the language that says the dwelling must be and remain on the same lot. And the point of that, you know, there's two scenarios. One, you just mentioned, is that something got moved at some prior point in time, and it really hasn't been there since 1925. But another is that somebody says, well, I want to move it now, today, to my lot and use it under this bylaw. So in both those scenarios, it would not qualify. It needs to be a building on an existing property that's been there since that timeframe. Is that right?
Yeah, so we're not promoting, you know, the idea was not to promote people moving old structures from one bit of land to another. It's to preserve, you know, old structures, old barns that are on lots and have always been there, you know, before 1925.
Okay. Because I think that came up the last time people were asking that question. We wanted to be clear about that.
So yeah, the last time we were working on accessory apartments, just clearing up that bit. And now it's accessory uses, structures for barns, accessory uses. Any comments? Open it up to the floor. Comments?
Do I vote on each of these as we go on, or do we need to vote after we close? Can't remember.
I thought we voted at our last meeting. Do we need to, I don't think we need to vote again.
Uh, I think we do. Larry?
Well, I think the following this hearing, I don't know that you have to do it tonight, but the Board has to-
Makes a recommendation.
Has to make a report to Town Meeting on each of the zoning articles. So-
And that would be upon following this meeting.
Right.
So be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Wouldn't do it-
You could do it, seriate it. Makes sense.
So we can do it right now?
Yeah, I think it might make sense to do it as we go along. This has been worked.
Yeah.
Everybody up here there?
Got a motion?
So I would make a motion that we approve the correctly numbered Articles 7 and 8 and recommend a town meeting that they pass these two amendments to the barn state of care. I will second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moving on to, we have Article 9, 9 and 10 now.
9, 10, 11. Another front line.
Actually, it's, where the next one is 3.
Oh, okay.
Which is Article 9. So is that though? So this is the mixed-use village overlay district, formerly known as the Village Overlay District. This came to Town Meeting in 2012, and it did not pass. After that Town Meeting, we met with opponents and opponents of the bylaw, and what we heard from them was that they thought the concept was a sound one, the village overlay. They just wanted us to focus more on business and limited business properties that the 495 and 117 interchange. And also, they wanted the residential component of the mixed use to be mandatory. After that, the Board of Selectmen created a working group, mixed use, I mean, Village Overlay Working Group, again made up of people who were against the overlay initially, I think, you know, other people who were for it, and maybe some people who hadn't expressed themselves on the matter previously. So there are nine members. And they've worked on that over the, you know, almost, you know, for a year, maybe nine months. And at the end of that process, you know, there's a unanimous vote on the parcels around 495 that will be included, and also unanimous vote in support of the article, which does include the requirement for residential within the mixed use, and also, you know, related to the parcels around 495. So we have, we have a map up here that shows the parcels. I'll just, I'll just go through the parcels. You know, it depends on, depends on how long you've been in Bolton, what name you give these parcels. But we have Bolton Office Park, which some people call Flatley. We have Bolton Corners, which is where Clinton Savings Bank and Dr. David are. It used to be called the Freedus Property. Surrounding Bolton Corners is kind of a horseshoe-shaped property, and that is still owned by Mr. Freedus. There is the Kane property. It's not all of the property. It is, it is the, it is the business, it is the business-owned property from 495 over to Country Cupboard, including Country Cupboard, and which is owned by another family, and continuing to the gas station, ending at the gas station, which is owned by the Kane family. And it does include residential plots behind that, directly behind their landlocked plots. So that's 4D, 4.33. And, but the land, 4D 71, that is, that parcel is also owned by the Kanes. It's also residential, and that is not included. So that's from the gas station around the corner to 85. So that would remain outside of the overlay, and you know, that, you know, that would remain, you know, residential under our current zoning. So there's, yeah. So basically, it's the pink, pink parcels. So a lot in the overlay, you know, is, you know, hasn't changed, but basically, the idea is that it allows multiple buildings on a lot. 10% lot coverage instead of 8%. Instead of 100 foot, 50 foot setback, you would have a reduced setback from the road and the sides. Then there's mixed, mixed-use housing, and then more flexible parking. So I think currently, the parking requirements are like a ratio of three parking spots. Is it three parking spots for 100 square feet to one?
The existing.
Yeah.
It's three square feet per one square feet of retail space. So it's three square feet of parking for every one square feet of retail space that you have.
Right, 3 to 1 ratio. So you know, less, less parking requirement. There have been questions about the village overlay. There have been concerns, I guess, about how the overlay might, might be putting too much, you know, control in the Planning Board's hands. So I just wanted to talk about the special permit process, which, you know, which regular development, you know, by the bylaw has to go through, but also the village overlay. So that process, the developer would come to the Planning Board and express an interest in doing the mixed-use village overlay. The Planning Board would pass the Design Review Board to get involved and work with the developer. And the Design Review Board has a whole list of criteria. They have an application, a list, a whole list of criteria, and they, they rate the development, and they come back to the Planning Board with their recommendation based on, you know, the final set of plans. You know, so that's one check. And then there's another piece. It's the site plan review by the Selectmen. If the three Selectmen, you know, if the Selectmen do not like the site plan, they would send it back to the Planning Board, you know, for further work. There are two other pieces. There's, you know, traffic study is part of the village, mixed-use village overlay, and that's paid for by the developer. And also, what we noticed when we studied all of these parcels around 495, they all have either wetlands or environmentally sensitive areas, which means, you know, they have rare and endangered species in them, like, I forget what type of salamander. So that would be another part of the process, and that would involve the Conservation Commission, looking at the wetlands, looking at the 100-foot setbacks that are for wetlands. So, and then finally, you know, when, when, you know, this board votes the special permit, it would take, you know, four out of, it would take four votes out of five members to pass it. So, I mean, you can imagine, in a, in a hearing situation, if everybody's very unhappy, it's hard to imagine we could get that type of majority. I just wanted to answer that question.
Where does it, does it say that somewhere?
What?
Four out of five members?
For a special permit.
Special.
Special permit requires a super majority.
Okay, so this doesn't, this particular bylaw, but it says that in, in our bylaws, in the special permit process. Thank you, thank you very much.
So special permit is a, in essence, a, you know, a step above, you know, a permit that's allowed as of right under the use schedule.
Also, I mean, with the current zoning, they still have to go through the same special permit process. So if the Kane property wanted to put up a strip mall, which is under the current bylaw, they'd go through the same process.
They wouldn't.
And you did say site plan review by the Selectmen, too, right?
Yeah.
So it really is, and it needs to pass the Board of Selectmen as well. So it's not one board voting on it. It's many boards reviewing on it, and reviewing it and having input on it. But at the end of the day, both the Selectmen and the Planning Board have to approve it.
So I think there are a lot of checks and balances in the process, and you know, it's a detailed process.
Board of Health would also be involved, and virtually every piece of land conservation would at least be consulted, if not have some wetlands that they'd be concerned about. Get another board.
So lots of hearings. Should we open it up to the floor?
Does the Design Review Board have veto power? In other words, if, if you guys were happy with it, and the Selectmen were happy with it, but the Design Review Board was unhappy with it, could you pass it in spite of their objections? You're the ultimate passing authority, right?
Design Review Board is advisory only, so they don't have a veto power. And I do understand that the makeup of boards can change over time, but I'd be quite surprised if both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen were to totally disregard that. I'm sure concerned citizens would bring that particular disapproval up over and over again in hearings as well.
So Erica has copies of the Design Review Board application, as well as the criteria that they judge a project by. It's work looking over.
So they really make a recommendation to the Planning Board rather than review your project?
So the, the way I understand it, they are working with the developer on each item in that, you know, privacy, green, privacy buffers, sound.
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, how, how the sidewalks connect into the neighborhood, materials, massing, how it fits in with the character of Bolton. So it's, they have quite, you know, a long list. It's pretty rigorous, I would say. Can you identify yourself?
Gilbert Sugarbrook. In the confines of the red area, the overlay, if there is any wetlands or anything that concerns the Conservation Commission, this, this outline doesn't negate their ability to stop.
No. I mean, that's one other thing the working group looked at. We looked at the wetlands and the 100-foot buffers, and then we met with Conservation and asked them, you know, how often do you allow people to build in the 100-foot buffer? And, you know, I don't know if they said they couldn't remember. So, you know, so that, you know, when, when we looked at what 8% lot coverage looked like and 10%, and we looked at the overall lots where they could actually build, once you take out the wetlands, in some cases, the figures went down. You know, we had this assumption that people could, on some lots, they could build, you know, we'll look at, like, we'll look at the Clinton Savings Bank, Bolton Corners. You know, it was assumed going in that they could, you know, right now, the structure there, the existing structure is estimated around 7,000 square feet. And at 8%, they could add an addition, or they could add an addition now and go up to, it was assumed, 11,000 square feet. So we looked, we looked at the lot, and then we subtracted the wetlands, and really, if they knock that down, or if they wanted to add, they could really only go up to like 10,800 square feet.
The 100-foot only.
That's the footprint, and that's at 10%. So that's adding 2%. So it's, because of the wetlands and the sensitive areas, even at, even with adding 2%, it doesn't change the footprint, what they can do dramatically at all. And in some cases, it's less than what, you know, previously we thought.
But the answer, simple answer is no. This bylaw and the Planning Board cannot do anything to restrict what another board is authorized to do in their purview in terms of their responsibility. So we can't tell Conservation that you have to allow something, or you need to look at things differently. They act independently. Same with Board of Health. You have to meet all the Board of Health requirements. We have, we have no ability to interfere with that whatsoever or change that. So anything that is changed from a zoning perspective, which is what we look at, doesn't abrogate those other requirements for Conservation and Board of Health and-
Yes, so the Board of Health is interested in the wells, among other issues, and that, so that's also on one of the maps we worked on, where these circles are the wellheads. But, you know, basically, there's a whole stream system that goes through Bolton Office Park, then over, over into, over into Freedus and Bolton Corners. And then the Kane property is, you know, has the salamander and other species there. So, and as well as wetlands, you know, closer to the gas station. So it really, they are restricted in many ways. Thank you.
Management, so independent and a resident, Bolton. On the Kane property, those, there's a, 4D 33 is residential. Or was it 4D 30?
33, yeah.
33. So is, will that zoning have to change or not?
I think it was 4D 71 that was partially residential, partially business.
Yeah, 33 is, so the, so the current, without the overlay, it would stay, it would stay commercial, uh, business and residential. But the overlay would include, include the residential and the business.
But it's not all of 4D 33. See, the pink line denotes business, business-owned land, so it cuts through that lot.
Oh, so in other words, that lot, only the commercially zoned part of that lot? Only the-
No, the residential will be included in the village overlay.
It will.
So, you know, so that's, you know, in our thinking about it, you know, we're asking for a mixed use, and so that includes retail, offices, and apartments of different types. And so, you know, by combining the business zone land with the landlocked residential behind it, you know, we're enabling, you know, what, you know, instead of having, you know, one house for one and a half acre, we're building that residential piece into the development. And I think, I think what the working group believes is that the residential really changes the type of development you get, that people, that developers understand that people don't want to live next to, like, a Walmart. They want to live next to businesses that will provide services for, for the people living there. So that's the idea.
Also, because the residential part falls into the village overlay, does not mean that business can be cited in that residential part. It's still underlying residential.
Yes.
So in the example of 4D 33, the part of it that's closer to 117 is business, so any business development goes in would have to be in that front part, whereas any residential apartments and such, that can be cited in either. Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my next, that was my add-on question, my follow-up question. So, so that underlying zoning still prevails.
That's correct.
But because the mixed-use overlay includes, but the housing component is not, so the housing component, if a developer wants to build under the mixed-use overlay bylaw, they have to put in a housing component?
Yep.
Okay.
That's, that's one of the major changes from the last one. This group has decided that housing is a requirement.
Okay, and so with Kane's situation, the underlying zoning prevails, so in their mixed use, however it's laid out, they put in the housing component, it has to be in the housing part of that parcel?
That is not true.
Oh, I didn't say that.
Housing can be in either, but the business can, has to be in business.
I think that's to the development. It can happen anywhere in that development. Ideally, you know, the-
Wait, housing and business can be anywhere in the parcel?
Yes.
Oh.
Sure about that? Yep.
Yeah, so you're, you're correct that the underlying zoning continues. Anyone can continue to-
But it doesn't.
Anyone can continue.
You can use either one.
Let me, let me, let me lay it out for you. You can continue to develop the property under our current zoning, which would be business is business, residence is residence.
Yes.
8% footprint, one building.
Okay.
If you want to use current zoning, you can. If you're within the overlay, you also have the option to petition for a special permit under the overlay. And in doing that, you can use the rules that fall within the overlay, which allows you to go up to the 8%. It allows multiple buildings.
10?
10%, allows multiple buildings, all of it, you know, the issues that Jonathan just mentioned.
Yes, it is.
So it allows you to do those. The Kane property is the one place where a piece of property that is not zoned business is included within the overlay. And by including it within the overlay, if they choose to go that route, and if they receive a special permit, they can use the land within the overlay according to the rules of the overlay, however they see fit. So it's not limited to-
Got it.
Business and business, residents and residents. And that was intentional, because you're requiring housing, and once you require housing, you diminish what you could do otherwise from a purely 100% business point of view. If you want to encourage a village overlay use as opposed to a traditional use, you've got to build some flexibility into that, especially for that parcel. This is a landlocked piece of land in the back that doesn't abut any, any, you know, residences or anything like that. And there was a buffer in drawing this line that prevented it from extending out to the residences on Route 85. So it is, it is, at the end of the day, it is definitely increasing the area that the business development could occur within the two parts of the Kane property. But it's only a total of 10% for all the property. It has to include housing. And for whatever they do, there's going to be a significant, you know, sewer aspect and water aspect. So it is not, I mean, I don't know if you have the numbers, but it's not greatly increasing what they could do there. It's just making it a little more flexible for how they could use their land.
Is there a ratio between the business and residential in those areas?
No, we, we kept that. We didn't specify 60/40. We kept that open, that there's a line in the article that talks about balance. And so, again, that's part of the process. They might come forward with a plan where all the housing is up on the road and all the business is in the back, and, you know, things like that. And, you know, we would work on that with them, the Design Review Board. You know, there'd be, there would be feedback, and the plan would evolve.
Now, there are different ways you could do it. They could choose to put a business development in the traditional business land, and do a residential development in the residential land, and do it all as one development, and it would meet the overlay requirements.
But ideally, like, what we've talked about is that the business would be along 117, as kind of the front row of buildings, and that maybe the second row of buildings might have offices downstairs and apartments upstairs, and maybe the third row of buildings behind that, or cluster, would, would be all residential. So it just, you know, those are, yeah, it's tricky.
There's a variety of ways you could do it.
I was gonna say, I mean, the goal to this was to allow flexibility to the town that did the- and the developer and, you know, all the boards involved to get something that's right. And so it's hard to, you know, say sixty-five percent, you know, business, thirty-five percent this and, you know, all, all the guidelines were put into place to make it flexible to get what we want. Because each parcel of land is, is different, you know, so.
Yeah, but, you know, it's definitely gonna, you know, if there are token three or five, you know, residential units in a, in a larger development.
Right.
That's going to be obvious to everybody and will be commented on. So, you know, we, balanced is, you know, written into the, into the article. And, you know, I think that's for all the different, you know, all the different groups who weigh in on the site plan, you know, that will be an issue to remember and bring up.
Do you have any of the visuals of?
For the village overlay?
Yeah, like the computer mockups or whatever, what it could look like?
Sure. You know, in my, my office, I can.
I think that it's a good presentation.
Yeah, um, on the map, there is a building mostly west and a little north of Bolton Office Park building. What, what building is that?
So that is the manor.
Bolton Manor.
Bolton Manor. So the lines are not, we have to correct this, but the lot lines are not matching.
So Bolton Manor is a half in, in?
Yeah, if you move that purple line over to the blue line, that would be correct.
Oh, okay. So, so Bolton Manor and the property of Bolton Manor is entirely out of the?
Yes, it's out of the.
So, so, so it really is only the Bolton Office Park.
Yeah.
And second, Planning Board may utilize provisions of Mass General Law, et cetera, et cetera, to hire consultants. Is that at the expense of the developer?
I don't.
Likely.
Pardon?
Likely.
But not, not necessarily.
Right.
So you might come to the, I don't know who you'd, I guess you'd come to the advisory reserve for some funding for a consultant if you thought you needed it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point of putting it in there is just to say that if we, you know, if the board feels the need to hire outside expertise, they're gonna do that, you know, to make sure that we review every aspect of it.
Would a developer read that and think he might have to pay for it?
I think he'd likely think that.
You hope otherwise, but our engineering is considered a consultant.
Right, well, they do, they do, you know, as a matter of course, pay for that, so.
The developers do pay for our engineers?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Eric, I don't know if you want to take on your things, sorry.
Current it could be. If you want to come take a look, this is, so I guess this is what Kane.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, this is what it currently could be and this is what?
I think that's a different lot.
Yeah.
It's a little bit bigger.
Oh, okay, this is the current zoning.
So they've got two parcels, so they could have two big boxes and a lot of.
This is current what it is. The business.
Country covered, the gas station. So they could, they could do, you know, four houses on the residential, you know, current zoning, two big box stores and a whole lot of, that would be the parking requirement, which is really high.
I mean, that's current what it is. So is this, do you have a, do you have a visual of three?
Uh, it's on the back of mine. Isn't three on the back? Yeah.
No, but this is just current zoning.
Oh, that's only current?
Yeah, this is, this is a visual of what it currently is.
All right, I, I might.
We have like a mockup.
Oh, this must be his focus area, because I think this is the purpose. This is not a real life field.
Okay, so yeah, so now this is what it currently is and this is what it could be. With some businesses in the front and then residential in that back area.
And you're against residential?
Looks like O'Hagan with business. Looks like O'Hagan with business.
What's O'Hagan?
The thing in Stowe, on one seventeen in Stowe, housing.
Over by those.
Cluster there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's Mark O'Hagan's.
What if Mark O'Hagan?
And then these will all be vacant because it's on the.
Customism there. Well, yeah.
That's more to illustrate than the difference. These are rough diagrams.
I really, really with the current zoning, you wind up with the one building with like a strip mall.
So I know, yeah.
And nobody wants that.
You know, a little sense though that you do sort of wind up with a strip mall with some housing behind it. Very nice strip mall, strip mall, I mean, because of the design review requirement, but you put the business up front in a strip.
Well, it doesn't have to be, it could be multiple buildings.
Now, a strip mall, I think, is really, you know, one roof line.
Yeah, right.
Big glass.
This would be several different, differentiated.
Yeah. If you look at the design guidelines, it specifically talks about making the facade not bad. You know, making it look like red, like houses, like more, like a village sort of look. I mean, so you have to read through it, it's multiple pages of it.
I don't mean to do that. I think it will.
It's irresistible, isn't it?
I think it will look fine, I, I will read about the economics.
But again, you have to realize that they could build this right now.
Well, yeah, but the economics for that would probably be a little better.
Rezoning that.
No, they could build that with the current, with the current zoning. They can build that.
Not with an eight percent footprint.
With an eight percent footprint, they can build forty thousand plus square foot strip mall, right?
Sixty-five.
I mean, they, they.
The current zoning isn't economic to them, but the current zoning doesn't allow big enough big boxes to, to, to work out.
Well, it hasn't yet.
Yeah. This last time wasn't the, the, the first time they came to us wanting to put a bigger box there. They were there about five years ago proposing a.
Hotel.
Well, no, in between the hotel and this last time, they were also proposing some big store. They wanted us to rezone so that they could have sixty thousand square feet instead of forty thousand, eighty, yeah.
Eighty or under, yeah.
You know, that, that brings up an important point. We met with, I think, I think we met with four or five out of the six owners and, you know, presented, presented our work and they were very positive about it and willing to, you know, willing to stand up and say that. And that was a bit of a surprise, you know. I, I wasn't expecting that based on feedback that I'd heard from the last go around. But I think the lot has changed in, you know, how, how places are developed in the last two years. And that's kind of trickled down to everybody, it seems.
Where are the Kane, did you get feedback from the Kanes?
Yes, Kathy Adams Kane, Mr. Freedus, Dr. David's husband, Mr. David, Jeff O'Neil from Bolton Office Park. So, you know, they all came, stayed, you know, we had a really nice meeting with them. They, they were, you know, they said they'd been waiting for this. So very positive about it. And then Mark O'Hagan came, he's working on the forty B and Sugar Road. And he really, he really saw the opportunity of how that residential development could, you know, the pedestrian pass could link up with, with these developments and be an asset to the, you know, the community he's planning. Any more comments, questions?
Any applications? Do you have any, do you have?
Well, this has to pass first. I mean, I, I think the longer they sit on these parcels, the more they're going to be worth, you know, so it's kind of a calculation.
Wait, say that again?
The longer, the longer these, these, these parcels are open, you know, I think the more they'll be worth in ten or twenty years.
A commodity that's growing as opposed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Over the last ten years, that wasn't a very.
Depends, depends the time.
No, so, so Doug says Bolton's at fifty-five percent build out. So when Bolton's at seventy to a hundred percent build out, you know, and with a last exit on four ninety-five that doesn't have, you know, doesn't, has these open parcels, they're going to be very valuable. So.
Oh, my God.
So there, there's, there is a good reason to wait twenty years, you know, if you're into a long-term investment and.
Oh, time to move.
Yeah.
Well, ten percent on any of these parcels isn't gonna be a, we're not gonna turn into Marlboro.
Okay. You know, I, that, it's, it's a very busy intersection in the summertime. It's that, you know, one seventeen, trying to ride a bike, trying to walk, it really gets very, very busy in the summertime. On the weekends, I mean, it's amazing how busy it is. There's all sorts of weird vehicles coming off because of course, there is the country covered and there is the gas station there. So it's busy and it will only get busier.
Yeah, I mean.
And you will not be able to get from one side of Bolton to the other.
So, you know, it should be really clear that, you know, these parcels are there and they're zoned business or limited business. And there isn't the political will in town to, or the money to buy them up and preserve them. And so, you know, I'm sure there are many people who are on the working group and many people in town would just like things to stay the way they are. And, you know, that is a great idea, it's just not reality. We don't control them. And so I, I think it's better to have something that, you know, is the right scale for Bolton, that feels right than to have, you know, big stores, you know, really large stores like the Bed Bath and Beyond, the ones that they put up everywhere. It's like the sporting goods, the Kohl's. I mean, we know there's developments, so, you know, hopefully, hopefully with the addition of residential, you know, it will be, have a nice scale. It will provide types of housing that Bolton does not now have, like, you know, studios and, you know, what they call granny flats and things like that, a little bit more creative.
Thank you.
So move on. Okay, have any motions to?
Make a motion, then we recommend town meeting, the Planning Board approves and recommends that we pass Amendment nine, Article nine.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? So Article ten and eleven are related to the. Ten, eleven, and twelve are related to the FEMA flood maps. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do. And perhaps someone in the audience can help me out with this too. In ten, eleven, and twelve in various places, it talks about a map or a report, sorry, dated July sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. If I'm not mistaken, that's in the future. Is that a typo on our part or are we, maybe it's gonna come up with this a couple of months from now and we get what we get, so might as well just accept it.
This came up.
Yeah, no, this came up at the, at the Slakman's meeting and Town Council said that that isn't a typo and it shouldn't say as of that date, but that maps have already been generated with that future date on them.
Sounds sketchy.
It's the starting date, so it's the effective date.
It's the starting map. It's the.
Yeah, the maps are already finalized, but that is the effective date.
I can just see massive confusion, town meeting about that and at least one conspiracy theory.
Larry will clear all that out. But.
No question about it.
The intent is to vote all three of these together as a consent agenda. They're, they're new maps coming out that we either endorse and accept and become a part of or we don't. And it's in the interest of people who live in this town to do it, I think. So we've done it in the past several times, every three or four or five years, they come up with a new set of maps and we forgot them.
Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we vote to recommend and endorse approving Articles ten, eleven, and twelve.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? So Article thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are related to medical marijuana. Doug, do you want to talk about these?
So thirteen is the local bylaw that we are recommending, that we pass, that creates some additional criteria by which we would review any applications for a medical marijuana treatment center in this town. The key points are that we would require explicitly that the process go through our special permitting and site plan review process and design review process. The special, Planning Board would be the special permit granting authority, that they are allowed only in business, limited business, and industrial districts, not in residential and limited recreational business districts. That any permit granted would be subject to an expiration in thirty-six months and need to be re-permitted. That we comply with all aspects of Mass General Law and regulations relative to RMDs. And that they must be set back not less than five hundred feet from residential dwellings and not less than fifteen hundred feet from areas where children congregate, including schools, playgrounds, daycare centers, libraries, churches, athletic playing fields, scout camps, and golf courses. And that these distances would be measured in straight line from the nearest point of the residence, meaning the building, not the lot line, to the facility in question, although in the case of a playing field, it would be the entire lot line. They're not allowed under the right to farm by law. And basically, this is just a way to get some additional local control over it. The net of those distances is that we would create probably three locations where they would be viable in our town. One would be on the east side of the business zone that we were just talking about at four ninety-five. The second would be the Skinner property in the limited business zone, again, on one seventeen, east of four ninety-five. And the third would be in the industrial zone on both sides of the road, again, on the east end of town, close to the Stowe line. So it's not one location, it's, it's multiple locations, I think that's important. But it is fairly limited where they would be allowed. And the other articles are follow-on articles. One is a definition, it comes right out of the state bylaw. The other one lists the zoning districts and where they're allowed and not allowed. The other one lists the zoning districts and where they're allowed and not allowed. And the final Article sixteen is one that we would recommend that we pass over in the event that the first three were passed by town meeting, because it is an extension of the moratorium until the end of the year, which is the maximum that we could be allowed to do at this point in time. But if we do put these bylaws in place, then we would not feel the need to put in place the moratorium. But we wanted to have that on here in case we do not. If we do not pass these, then we are subject to the state bylaw, which means they can go anywhere and
State regulation.
Regulation, thank you, David, I'll try, try to remember that.
State board
It's not a law, it's a regulation. But the state
Department
Regulations and, and requirements that, that are currently in place, um, that are not nearly as comprehensive as what we've put together here.
Is it caveat emptor if somebody has a lot and they build a residence after an RMD is up and running?
Yes.
We could literally build a house next to it.
If the Well, if, no, if they're already, if they're already permitted, then, then a, a new residence
We got a thirty-six, we got a thirty-six month per, per permit, right?
Mm-hmm. That would probably, that, I, you know, I can't tell you how that would go down, but that would be something the board would have to look at. My, I mean, I would think that they would have be grandfathered in, if the, if the residence came after that.
That, that has come up in other towns related to, like, somebody is playing chess, you know, in real estate, and they, they put in a daycare center. We'll have to look at those more carefully.
But at least with the thirty-six months to relook at it, we have the, at least an opportunity to look.
Yep.
Larry.
Larry Villani, Fox Run. I, I'm just curious, have, are there other bylaws that the attorney generals approve that have that thirty-six month, um, life?
We, we know other towns have proposed it, I don't know if they've been approved yet.
And then what about the, the fifteen hundred foot setback? Is, is that something that, that's, that's been approved as, as well? Or could we be at the cutting edge here?
No, well, Conchr proposed three thousand feet, and I thought that was approved.
I think that's approved.
So, so, but what they did was
I never saw proof that that was approved, and I checked, I never saw proof that that was
It is, it's underway.
It is? Okay, then it must have been
Well, on the warrant, it doesn't mean it's approved by the state. Are they voting on it now?
No, no, Conchr is done, it's, they got the bylaw signed by the AG.
Okay, all right, so that was my understanding too, that it had been approved.
Does any of that three thousand, though? Where they would wanna put the facilities in the medical center, does that three thousand square foot setback cut into that, or is that, like, it doesn't go into that area, you know?
The Route Two medical area.
Right.
Yeah, so they, you know, as opposed to what we're doing, which is saying it's allowed in certain zoning districts, they created a new district, so almost an overlay type district, medical area, and said, this is where it is allowed. And I assume that that area is more than three thousand feet from any, um, of the other things that they were, you know, referring to, but
Well, it's, it's the Emerson campus, and then across the street, there are all those doctors' offices.
So it's a little different, but I, you know, the other thing we did put in here was the final, uh, item number I, we said if any provision of this bylaw is declared invalid or enforceable, the other provisions shall remain in full force and effect. I don't know if that'll work either, but the point being that if, for example, that, the idea is that if the attorney general said, well, we don't really care for that, five hundred
We'll approve it with
I, I don't know of anyone doing the five hundred feet from residence, frankly.
Yeah.
On top of not in residential district. And the reason for that is that we have residences right next to, you know, obviously, every, every business zone that we have. So we, we felt it was important to have a setback, you know, at, at least of that amount, which was the number that was used in the, the original state regulation. So I'd, you know, we'd be hopeful that would be approved, but that was, that was the thinking.
Yeah, no, I, I think it makes sense, though, though this whole thing, as you know, is all kind of moot in that the, the state has already approved two for Worcester County, and it's gonna be a long time before there are any more, uh, show up for Worcester County.
Wasn't it five per county?
That was the maxima, but in the first round, they've, they only approved two, I think, one in Worcester, one in, in Millbury, and then they said, and there are some counties where they didn't approve any, and I think that's their, their next goal, is, is to get, get some dispensaries in every, every county.
They couldn't spread out better than Worcester and Millbury for
It may be moot.
Go where the customers are.
It's not gonna be moot for
Little Fishburg, unless they have
Five years.
Yeah, well, no, the, the sky's not falling, but I, I mean, it's good to have this in place.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, so I just have a, a question for David. And, you know, you're very vocal on, on the, on this subject, so I just wanna know where you and your group are, you know, related to this.
Well, we're, we're very pleased with, with what you've done and that it's on the warrant. We do have some, uh, concerns on the, the residential setback, and I don't know. We haven't reached any kind of decision or plan to do anything definite about that. But, but that's the one area where we're a little uncomfortable. I've mentioned Bolton Woods Way a few times.
I mean, you could tweak that residential to the point of that it's only paragon, but then will it be accepted by the attorney general?
Yeah, and I, I don't think we would wanna do that, but, but, but I am uncomfortable about at least Bolton Woods Way.
I don't understand the issue.
Do you mind if I ask it?
No, it's good to have this discussion.
Bolton Woods Way is pretty densely populated, and it's pretty close to, uh, Cobham. And I don't think we ought to allow, um, a growing facility in Cobham, 'cause I think, although it's a little more than five hundred feet away from Bolton Woods Way, I think they would still be pretty adversely impacted by it.
I see, thank you.
I do think, in this, you know, I've said this before, that if, if you extend that beyond the five hundred feet to whatever it needs to be, six hundred, six fifty, you probably eliminate the Skinner property as well and the property east of four ninety-five, so then it does become one parcel. So that's my concern, that it, I don't think it makes sense to make it one parcel, I don't know if it would pass, but I feel bad proposing something that says this is the part of town that we think is the place only here.
Well, you're already there.
Well, but it's not only there, it's, it's, it's not singling out
Not gonna be on the west side of four ninety-five.
The west I mean, with the schools in the fifteen hundred feet, I mean
And it's not gonna be anywhere near your village overlay, because there's residential there, even though it's limited business.
Well, the, the cane property, it could be
It could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be on the cane property.
There's residents
I can't imagine they would decide that was
You know, we got, you got an issue there, because
No, they, they could choose to develop it under our current bylaws, they don't have to choose the overlay, that's an option.
That's right.
So
But it is important to remember, the whole thing is, is still under your special permit powers, and so even if, it doesn't mean that, that, that somebody could as of right come down next to Bolton Woods Way, they, they have to have the hearing and, and satisfy the board that all those, the, the standard special permit requirements have been met.
Right. And my guess is, a lot of people from Bolton Woods Way would come to such a meeting and Like this is, you're sitting right there. With Bolton Woods Way, would they have a butters rights? Was, what is it, three hundred feet? What, what is the butters rights? It's three hundred? Or is it just the next parcel?
For notification?
Um, to have like a complaint filed, like
They're, they're more than three hundred, that, that's the problem, they're more than five hundred.
Yeah.
That's your
I'm just, I was just saying, what are the butters rights? Like, oh, complain if, if something was gonna happen.
To have standing, what is it, Larry?
Well, no, I, I think that, I mean, if they're abutting to the property, they have, they'd have standing. Or they could even sort of claim standing if, if they're further away, and it's not a, you don't have a presumption of standing if, if you're not in the butter or within three hundred feet. But you can, you could, if you could prove your, your
But that's three hundred feet of the property line, right?
Right, not the building.
So we're talking about setbacks to billing, whereas a lot of people on Bolton Woods Way would be within three hundred feet of the property line. So they would have standing.
We have a motion.
Again, I do wanna thank the board for
Yes.
For writing this and getting it on the warrant, I think that was very responsive to the town meeting vote.
Thank you.
We have a motion to recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend Articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen to be endorsed by the planning board.
Second?
So you're gonna include sixteen in your vote, in your approval vote?
Oh, that's right, I mistake, we didn't talk about sixteen yet, did we?
Well, let, let's say that we would, um
I'll, I'll change my motion to endorse thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against?
So, in, in the event that thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are not passed, then I would make a motion that we recommend sixteen as an extension of the moratorium. In the event that they are passed, I would recommend that we pass over, we make a motion and pass over it.
Yes, David, we can pass both sets.
Well, no, what I was thinking is, is usually on something like this, when it's advisory or selectmen, they say recommendation to be made on town meeting floor, which would, would fit well here, and
But their, their recommendations aren't in the warrant, they make reports at town
Oh, okay, so they don't, they, oh, okay, I, I thought they're, they're, because we put in
This is really just to say what we're gonna say.
I probably printed planning board recommendations in the warrant before, but I guess not. We've had, we had capital planning in the warrant last year, I think.
So, do we have a second on Doug's?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? So, Article seventeen and eighteen, seventeen and eighteen, special permit for kennels. Are there any questions or comments on the board? And from the floor?
Does this affect any existing kennels? Yeah, I asked that from the floor, I don't remember what.
I think it would, right, because they lapse every twenty-four months.
Yeah, I would, I would read it as their grandfather for twenty-four months.
I'm sorry?
So it says, it, it, they need to get a special permit for kennels, and they lapse after twenty-four months, so if somebody's a pre-existing grandfather kennel, does that mean that after twenty-four months, they have to get a permit, after this is passed?
Well, but they were
I think they run it on a one-year license currently with the, uh, the town clerk, so I don't think there's any grandfather.
Okay. So, you should probably ask the town clerk about it, but, yeah, I think the intention is that everybody get involved in the
The way I read this was, uh, this expiration is basically, you have twenty-four months after you get your special permit to go into business. I mean, we don't have country covered, for instance, in every two years to renew their special permit, or Slater's. I don't know if Slater's has a special permit.
Oh, you're absolutely right, yeah, the way that's written.
And if it was gonna be that way, I'd say, why does medical marijuana get three years and kennels only get two? I know it's too late to amend that, so I would suggest that at town meeting. And I think that, yeah, it's twenty-four months to, to get the ball rolling, unless good cause.
But the, the virtual licenses
This is simply the business special permit, not the kennel license that Larry was talking about. Is that from selectmen or board health or annual control?
I think it's the town clerk that does the licenses for, for kennels, but, but this is, is, I mean, this, this is sort of a, a, a new requirement, so I don't think those, those existing licenses are gonna, um, I don't know, though, to the extent they're, they're pre-existing. I guess that's, it's, it's something worth, um, looking at, 'cause we haven't had zoning articles dealing with kennels, and we do have kennels in place. And so there's an argument that they're sort of a, a pre-existing, um, now non-conforming, 'cause they don't have special permits, but they were already in place.
I don't know, talk to the clerk.
I can talk to Pam about it. I think, I think the building inspector had weighed in on this as well, so I can talk to Mike, get his opinion.
Yeah, you might wanna give us some talking points on this.
I, I don't remember, so is, is kennel, is, is that just the note overnight, like, like long-term stay? What about like the doggy daycare, just for like, if it's just business hours, is that a kennel?
Do we have a defin, I'm not sure, I have to see what the definition of a kennel is.
I think it's any more than three dogs.
Whether it's a short term or a long term?
If you're talking more than four dogs, I think he
Yeah, whichever they changed it. I just think of like a kennel, like, you know, you're going away for a week or something.
Yeah, a lot of these kennels are daytime now.
Yeah.
So, is it an issue of
The intent is, it's, it's a business and a permit of business, where as opposed to just allowing it to exist as a, you know, as it has in the past, kind of unregulated. But we did pass a bylaw a year ago that I believe related to the licensing.
Right, it could have formed our definition of kennel to, to state law.
Yeah.
So this is now saying that any, I would think a new kennel has to go through a special permitting process, which is what we've done. With what kennel had come before, it says a new business in the last five years. Doggy, whatever it is.
The country dogs.
Okay, country dogs?
Yeah.
But isn't there, uh, no, yeah, I have many questions about this, but I don't know enough about it to even articulate the question.
Yeah.
You should go, go test with the town clerk.
No, well, I did once find an article that sort of petered out, and now I'm wondering about other establishments, but go on, you were saying?
You know, this was drafted by some committee and, you know, it came to us, or some group, and I guess it's the town clerk.
Yeah, I think it was the town clerk, the building inspector, and Jennifer.
Okay, so
Jennifer Brady?
So, you know, I'd say it's a little awkward, you know, landing on, you know, we haven't really, we aren't that
That's what I'm saying, we need some talking points here, else we're gonna look pretty uninformed.
Do you, do you want this?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it was definitely an issue that came up, you know, when we approved the doggy, the country dog, was it country dogs at the ZELPA? You know, they were held, they were held to a higher standard at country dogs than, you know, the people starting kennels, you know, you know, in residential neighborhoods and other areas, because they were in the business district. So it was trying to come up with a response to that.
I see, because we don't have special permit rates on residential, right, that's why, so this defines anything, anywhere in town?
Well, kennels were a traditionally allowed home occupation. And the issue is, is it a, you know, home occupation that needs, that should continue to be unregulated? Or is, is it a business use that should be regulated? And I think it's a business use that should be regulated. But there's no, you, there's nowhere in our bylaws that say kennels are allowed, right? It doesn't, you know, as a home occupation, it doesn't say that, we never said it.
Well, this, actually, just, for, just me talking here, this came up for an article that Well, this actually, just me talking here, this came up for an article that I was going to kind of write about the so-called proliferation of home-based, doggy daycare, dog sitting services. And the town clerk said, they're not allowed. And so I decided, you know, I didn't want to go there, because I didn't want to, you know, if they're underground dog sitting. You know, I mean, if someone's just taking care of their neighbor's dog, that's one.
Right, right.
Well, there are a whole bunch in town that signs out, and then, you know, I don't, I don't know of the underground ones. Out there, but, you know, butters, you know, if they're that big, I'm sure butters, you know, might have issues with, you know, where's all the excrement going, the noise, you know? Those were all issues at the salt box that, you know, they worked very hard to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To smooth out. So, you know, it is an important issue, it's just, you know, Jennifer, with Jennifer leaving, it's just kind of, you know, one of those things she's working on.
So that actually raises, I mean, that's a good point, that if it's not a currently legal use, if it's not really a traditional home occupation, people are doing it, but not legally, then they're not grandfathered. And so those, this might, the intent of this might be to sort of regularize everyone with.
And I think you have to look at the context of the one that we already passed, so the whole, there's definitely an intent to bring some conformity to the process of regulating people who take care of a large number of other people's dogs for, as a business for money.
But not people who breed dogs, because that's what I always thought.
Well, I think, I think a breeder at some point becomes a kennel by definition, because of the number of dogs they have.
If it's the full definition of kennel, if they talk about breeding them.
Do they have a definition of kennel anywhere?
There is in the bylaw, under the general bylaw. But there's various definitions, like there's kennel, then there's personal kennel, there's veterinary kennel.
Oh, so that's only there? And all those definitions are included in this?
Uh, well, I don't know, I mean, we don't specifically say, we just say kennel.
Yeah.
So we could be very busy.
School are quiet.
Everybody has to go through.
And a selection field, pass the dogs off to the planning board.
So what kind of?
Barking up the wrong tree.
Oh. I mean, do we have any idea what happened? I guess we don't really know much about the existing ones, but could. Do you know what, the standards that we're going to apply mean that they might have difficulty meeting them?
They might.
I mean, could, could the existing kennels, the underground kennels, have trouble meeting our standards as we expect to apply them under this proposal? Could we find them?
I don't know why they would.
Is it the regular business special permit standards?
I mean, we don't say what it means, right?
Plumping it all the rest counts?
What does it say? It says sufficient area, but we don't define what that is. Um, and the health and safety of the public, we don't define exactly what that is either.
Well, that's going to be the board of health, I think, you know, they were the ones concerned with that outdoor area.
But for example, with the street dogs, they, didn't they, they had to landfill all the, the smelt of all the, all the waste, right? They could just leave it in the pit.
And they use a special organic.
Right, so are we going to require, are we going to require that all the kennels that have to.
The board of health is going to want to know, what are you doing with, you know, the urine and excrement from your dogs?
So, so those underground, so in, within 24 months, if a board of health doesn't think that they're meeting it, then they lose their.
But also, it's going to be about the, you know, the butters are going to come in and say, you know, what, if they have issues.
If we get an awful lot of these, they'll recommend that the excrement issue be dealt with by delivering to the selectmen. Sorry, Larry. So a big can of worms out, we're looking at it.
A can of worms. So do you want a table voting on this until we get some feedback from?
That sounds fair. So Article 19, it's the acceptance of Drummond Hill Road, Ledford Circle, and Fieldstone Way. And those are all in the Northwoods development.
Is there anything outstanding on this right now?
There is sort of a lot of things that need to be taken care of. He still hasn't paid his street acceptance fee, and I still don't know what that number is. I think he's going to have, De Sherman and Dallas calculate that, so I need to, I need to at some point to send them an email and kind of follow up with all these things. For example, to like the lighting, now that it's been brought to my attention that there was lighting on the plan and that was never installed, does he have to come before the planning board now and get a waiver for that? Because it wasn't constructed?
I don't know if everybody knows, but so one of the residents.
Sorry, one of the residents, yeah.
Called you and said.
You know, the plan, the final plans had lighting on it and they were never installed. Is the intention in that they aren't going to be installed, or will they be installed?
So were you able to look this up?
Yeah, well, actually Fred Hamway looked into it, and he said, yes, there are lights on the plans.
And what type are they? Are they at intersections or?
Um, I can forward you an email from, from him with the locations, off the top of my head.
If he doesn't pay his fee before the town meeting, we can pull it, is that what we would do, or?
I don't think so. I think, I'd have to go back and look at the subdivision rules and regs, but I think he can, I think he can pay that even after town meeting, technically.
But, but I think it's a practical matter.
Yeah.
That would give town meeting concern if the developer hadn't paid. I think he'd be foolish not to.
But we could.
Not to address every single one of your punch list items.
Right, right.
And then on the next question, whoever comes up from the planning board to give a recommendation can say, well, we did vote to endorse, but X, Y, Z that we wanted to happen didn't happen, so we don't want this to happen.
I think we have a lot of time, so let's try and get the.
That was on my to-do list.
No, just get the punch list done.
Oh, definitely. And some of the items, like the pedestrian mobility fund, he's taken care of, and he put together a draft deed, and so he's done some of the things. And some of the drainage issues that needed to be dealt with have been taken care of too. Like there was a grate missing, and so now they ordered a grate, and they put the grate on this outlet control structure. So he is, you know, chipping away at that list. There's just a few things that, particularly, I think, the street acceptance fee.
So I mean, I think we can wait till, you know, Fred gives his, kind of goes for his last.
Right, and that, that will happen relatively soon, because now the snow's starting to melt, and he probably could get out there.
Well, the lighting, we did have sort of a change in philosophy on lighting, street lighting, over a period of years. And I honestly can't remember, as it related to Northwoods, if we ever said, you know what, maybe we don't need this lighting, because there were a lot of residents pushing for not having lighting, so there was light pollution, and that we don't, you know, we live in a country town, and most of our roads don't have lights, why do we need lights and?
I do have a vague recollection of that, but I might be mixing it up with the, no, we don't want sidewalks. Session we have with the residents. Yeah, but that's basically what it was. We had them in here and said, you know, those plans say sidewalks, we're the sidewalks. He says, well, I don't want to build them in here, or all the residents in Northwoods. No, I don't want them. No, I don't want them. No. Well, this would be all right, but I don't really care. No, I don't want them. You know, right down the line.
Yes, I just want to know, you know, how tall are they?
Sure.
Where are they?
Well, also, I need to double check this special permit.
I mean, you could waive, I don't, I have no recollection, one way or the other, what, what happened on lighting and why they're. But, but I think at this point, you could, you know, either insist that you build them or waive the, waive the requirement, or.
I personally feel like it's ridiculous at this late hour to say, oh, by the way, you got to put some lights in.
No, I agree, but.
We've already reviewed the ASBIL, we've said that he did it according to the ASBIL, and now, you know, to have a resident say, oh, what about the light?
Maybe we've lived here for three years, but.
I mean, that's, that's just, I don't know, I find it piling on.
Well, we didn't bring it up, which is different, you know, it's different that a resident called, and, you know, so that, I think, makes it different than us noticing it at a late date.
Well, we can hold a public hearing, invite everyone who lives on that road, and I'll bet you that at least half would be against it and half would be for it, so then what do you do?
First, we break right in front of the one resident's house.
I'm talking about with all the, with all the people who live there, you know, included.
Are the electrical lines there? They're just waiting for poles to go up?
I don't think so, because I talked to his son, and his son's like, there's not even electrical. He's like, that's never, that was never even a thought.
And then the town's paying that electric bill.
Right.
That's true too, right.
Save money.
So I just don't know exactly how that gets handled.
Well, I mean.
Can we disregard it? I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds like we could waive it, but.
Well, we could require.
Or, I mean, disregard it, meaning do we need to have it be waived, or, or just?
I think we already voted to approve the ASBIL.
So that therefore it's taken care of?
Yeah, I think we, I mean, that's my opinion, but.
But, you know, I think, I think at a later date, we can vote to recommend this. And we could also vote to waive it for lighting.
Yeah, we don't need to resolve it tonight, but, but, you know, where are we going with it?
This isn't even really, this isn't really a zoning article, is it? I mean, this isn't one that requires a report. I mean, obviously, the Plenwood's recommendation is key at town meeting on this, but it's not the, it's not a zoning article that requires that formal report to town meeting.
Does it require two thirds? I think it's just majority of all.
Just majority.
Yeah.
Yeah, in essence, we're accepting the land from the developer that he put the roads on. So that becomes.
Well, you're accepting the roads as they've been constructed.
I mean, it's, it's important, you know, we're working with Fred, he's inspecting it. You know, we've been meeting with Chuck over and over, so I mean, I think it's important that we, you know, vote to recommend this, I just.
But I think you should pay the road fee.
Yeah, there's just a few things on the list. Lighting's probably on the bottom, it's the other things.
Right.
He's got a whole sheet, you know, maybe a half a sheet of things to just finish up. And it's like an attention to detail thing. He's very close, and I think everybody wants to move on. Uh, last piece is the pedestrian mobility fund. So it's transferring, transferring $4,000. That's Article 20, and.
So, like I understand, if the gift in lieu of goes into the general fund, and this is transfer from available funds program, where's it transferred to? Is it going under the purview of like a mobility committee account or something?
No, it is a mobility account, as opposed to just being in.
Okay, so basically.
Because when you're paying.
You're barking that specific amount to its actual intended destination.
Correct.
Okay, it's housekeeping, or keeping in this case. Okay.
In the future, though, will we have to do this every time?
Well, I mean, if more money's coming into that fund, yeah.
Right.
You have to tell me and vote every time?
Can, can we like?
Or now that we have the mobility account, which I'm assuming we didn't have before, can't.
I think once the accounts.
Setup, it can go directly to.
Yeah, I think the issue is, there's no account now that it can be put into, so this is creating the account. You know, we, we have the same thing for affordable housing, where there's a trust fund, and anybody makes a donation, it goes into that fund. We don't have to vote that at a town meeting, so I would, I would, I don't know, Larry.
It just, you know, it just, it comes up at an advisory, and that's like 10 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes. It comes up at the board of selectmen, it's like five or 10 minutes. And then, you know, it's on our, our list, it's just, you know, clogging up the works. Mary, you must have an opinion about this.
Well, let it clog up.
No, we, we want the money to.
Right, we want it earmarked for a specific purpose. We don't want it just to go into a general.
I, I agree.
I do have a question. When you went before advisory with the warrant articles, when you discussed this particular one with them, I tried to listen to it on my laptop, but the audio is, so I, I didn't really get the gist of it. Did you feel that the committee was unanimous in terms of being in favor of this being done? Or did you get a sense that some individuals weren't particularly happy about this?
The latter.
And it's not that it's money that should be set aside as it was intended for sidewalks, it's the whole issue of creating a fund and what that does to the budget. It's more a, an accounting issue than anything else.
Okay.
And that might come up at town meeting, yeah, who knows? But most people are in favor. I think you got a pretty solid.
Okay, good, good.
Majority in favor.
But, you know, the board of selectmen, the town treasurer, and some members of the advisory board don't see it the same way, so it's very confusing for everybody listening.
Yeah.
Same thing happened with that gift, people wanted to give $100 to the party member, remember?
Yeah, Dave was wrong about that, and your write-up was wrong, because we did accept it. We accepted, we accepted it. Dave said, you can't do that, and we talked.
Don said he'd take care of it. Don said he'd take care of it with the account.
We talked to the accountant, and the accountant validated our vote, the town did accept.
So I would make a motion that we recommend our appointee.
All right, well, second, looking for it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Yes.
So we're tabling the street acceptance article, right?
Well, just to vote.
Tabling through, that's what I meant, sorry.
Something about the general order of the articles, it's not really specific to planning board. It looks like all the expenditure stuff comes after the marijuana.
Yeah.
So that's going to be a tired audience late at night, probably.
It's going to be a long.
Talk to selectmen, so.
There weren't many people here tonight.
What are you saying, you'd rather have retired audiences rather? You'd rather have the audience. I'd rather not have a four-hour discussion about the treatment facilities, because it's really, and just a reserving article.
Where's the treatment facilities, last people already beaten down?
Well, we're not saying, oh, we want to put one in next to your house. You know, it doesn't need to be as complicated as it inevitably will be.
I was surprised after looking at all ours and looking how many.
Half the percent.
How many capital items. This is going to be a long.
Yeah, that's true.
Some big items, too. This might be a two-nighter, I don't know.
Do you have a question to close the hearing, or just close?
Jonathan, one thing I just wanted to mention too on the village overlay. Kent Trup has volunteered to make that presentation at town meeting. And then the other question he had was whether or not that article could be co-sponsored by the village overlay working with planning board.
So it'll be an ad.
I think that'd be fine.
Is that okay?
It'd be good, actually.
More of a, more of a thing.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote to appoint him? Only if he were the only sponsor.
I would make a motion that we endorse having that group be a co-sponsor and Ken give the presentation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
So I mean, we don't have to give one, it'll be just them?
There are a lot of items in here.
Well, I'm just talking about the significant.
But we're going to need somebody to become the point person for the FEMA thing.
I would recommend Eric do that.
The FEMA thing? I don't even know what you'd say.
FEMA maps, where you're gonna have to be.
That thought in July 16 question.
Just put up a picture of the maps.
Candles, candles or FEMA maps?
They'd rather do candles, I don't know.
No, no, to endorse having a working group. They did, they did.
Eric's gonna do candles. So John, you're gonna do FEMA?
Sure.
All right, I'll do marijuana.
I just wanted to phrase that way.
How much is the roading sentence fee?
I don't know yet, they need to calculate.
Couple thousand dollars.
It's a linear foot. Yeah.
Well, it's a certain amount up to, I think, like 500 feet or something, and then it's.
I'd say it's three bucks a foot, minimum of 1,600 or 1,500.
Yeah.
He wasn't very happy when he heard the cut, when the, the formula.
No.
That's kind of what he stormed out of.
For ever, so.
How many, how many, do, do we know how many linear feet of roads it is?
I could, I probably like pulled a plan with the roading sentencing, I can figure it out.
It's gonna be still.
Just Sean and Dillis should be calculating that for us.
So if it's a mile, then like 1,500, that'll be 15 grand. Wow, would be 15 grand.
15 grand, yeah, there's zero.
So is our intention to have a presentation for every article, or group articles?
So we need to present.
Jim's gonna need to know that.
So there's a difference between a presentation and giving the planning board report.
Right.
Planning board report is standing up and saying that, at a duly noticed public hearing, the planning board voted to endorse or not this, and at that point in time, whoever is doing that, and that's what we're talking about right now.
Oh, okay.
That person could give a few other comments. I think on most, I think on FEMA and on dogs, you don't need a presentation, you just need to do that.
Or mobility fund. I mean, I think the barn one would.
Yeah, I'm gonna say a couple things about medical, I'm gonna do a very short presentation on medical.
So our visuals?
I will have the visual of the maps, yeah.
Okay, so.
As slides or?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my intent.
Okay. Did it get to be more than five minutes?
No. No, I'll probably, and I'll do it, I'll probably have two or three slides.
So then, yeah, mixed use, just can, none of us, right? I think it's good to have more, Chia, one of them.
Your work is done?
Chia, sorry.
But, as happened tonight.
Yeah.
That's good.
You know, we need to be prepared to answer any of these questions clearly and succinctly. So that it's clear what, what will happen if this is passed, and what the intentions. So it'd probably be good if you said a few things. Maybe Ken will answer all those questions, I don't know. Just be close to the mic.
Always trying to be.
Do you have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the hearing, second?
Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Still doing, you're going over this, getting my business?
I'm confused about the Volvo's way just exists. Because it seems like.
So we're still, we're still, we haven't ended the meeting yet? We just ended the hearing?
It's okay, we can talk about it, but.
I'd be glad.
No, no, no.
But if you'd like to come up?
So what, oh, sorry, no, so you're having a planning board meeting?
We still aren't having a planning.
So, the way the bylaw works is.
Well, we can show you some, you know, on this map to show you the difference between what we're talking about, just to make stuff up. No, come on, I won't bite.
No, this is, I'm talking about the medical marijuana.
Yeah, I mean, this map doesn't show the right property, it's like, the concepts can be made clear.
So, if you look at this, you go 117, and you have cob from here, and you have heroin.
Heroin, yes.
These are both within, or they're both in the R industrial zone, so they would be places that would allow medical marijuana.
But.
Then you have some houses up here on Volvo's Way.
Yes.
The way the bylaw is written.
Yes.
From the edge of a house to the edge of a building that was used as an RMD, has to exceed 500 feet.
Right, and it does.
Correct, it does.
But something else doesn't.
Well, what I said was for standing, if somebody lives in a piece of property that is 300 feet.
Property border.
From property line, they have legal standing to be, that's what an abut is.
Considered an abut, yes.
To fight it.
Okay.
So even though their house would be more than 500 feet from the building, they very likely could be within 300 feet legally to the property line, but the way this is done is it's building to building.
Right, property line, that's it, thank you.
That just means that.
Were you also asking about soccer fields?
Me?
No, you were referring to, there was another type of boundary where.
1,500 or 500, it's the same thing, it's building to building. The one thing I said was, we, one of the areas where children congregate is a playing field, and in that case, there's not a facility, the facility is the entire field.
Yes.
So then the distance becomes the building to the field.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just needed to understand those differences, thank you.
Were there other?
Business owners?
Business owners.
Well, I was hoping that we could discuss the rules and regs for the designer report, I just wanted to make sure that the board was familiar with them.
Yeah.
Because Clinton Savings Bank is gonna be making a submission, I wanna make sure that I can forward this along to them.
If there's anything new with this, I think this is what they come up with, probably after their inception.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For children, it's happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
There you go.
Yeah, John, we were asking about this, and I thought that when we created the board, they put this together and brought it before the planning board and we approved it.
That's my recollection, too.
Okay, so obviously, we have members who weren't there then, but the point being that, you know, this is sort of the process that they follow.
So it still appears the design advisory team, so that has been advised. That was the first name, the DAT?
They wanted to be a board instead of a team.
Right.
It also refers to the old bylaws, not the current Bolton Code.
I think a lot of our rules and regs do that at this point.
So it should be updated, though.
All our, our rules, regulations need to be updated.
Is this, is that something that could just be, it doesn't have to go to town meetings to change this, right?
It's just milk, it's a law, it's gonna be adopted, yeah. But I think what Jonathan said earlier today, you know, is really the gist of it, that when somebody is coming for a special permit to build a new building or to alter a building in the, in any of our business zones, the planning board wants to engage the design review board to be the first, you know, line of input in terms of the, the way that building would look, and also even, you know, taking it further, all the things that are on their list, in terms of looking at, you know, fencing, landscaping, and things like that, to try to engage with that applicant to get things in line, so that by the time they get to the planning board, they've already reviewed it.
You're reading through this, Ozon Show, so is it required that they come before we assign them to the DRB? Or is it just?
Yes, that's the way I am turning it.
Yeah, they need to, I mean, we often say, if somebody's considering something, we say, well, you know, we do have a design review process.
Yeah.
That would be part of it, you might want to go talk to that board preliminarily to get a sense of, you know, what, what their expectations are.
But they don't officially work on it until we kick it off.
Right, I mean, you need an application to be able to send that application to the board.
But that raises the question that I was talking with Eric about, that you, you have situations potentially where, where the, the ZBA is, is, wants to, design review input on a variance, and you guys aren't involved at all. And in those cases, should the ZBA just go straight to design review, say, file your design review application, click, check off variance, and, and then have no input from the, from the planning board, or were you anticipating the planning board would always be the one that activates the design review?
So you're, you're just saying that the, the ZBA could activate the design review board?
Well, I mean, it, under, under the bylaws, the, I mean, design review clearly sort of falls under the planning board, and, and the planning board's the only ones that have the power to tell somebody to force them to talk to the design review, but I think for, is a, is sort of an operational, from an operational point of view, it, it might make sense not to have the planning board involved if it, if it's the type of project that, that you normally wouldn't be involved, that they could.
The only I can think of would be residential. Because any, any alteration of a business under a special permit.
Well, what is it?
Or, or an alteration of a business under loud zoning, but that wouldn't be before the ZBA, so we can't, we can't.
But any variance.
On the front page here, number three, it says, "The planning board, Board of Appeals, and the Board of Selectmen will determine which applications require review by the DRB," so the way I read it is, any of the three boards can kick it off.
And I think that's fine, I don't think you should.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm still trying to come up with a scenario where the ZBA would be reviewing something that wouldn't come before us, that they would want design review on, because design review is.
Well, someone's just expanding, they're expanding, they're not conforming lot, or they're not conforming structure, and they want to make it bigger, and someone on ZBA says, "Hey, we kind of want to know what it's gonna look like," or.
ZBA has the power.
Yeah, no, no, and I think that it, this would seem to give it to them, and I think this makes sense.
Well, the, those non-conforming businesses, it's really important, you know, when they're making changes, and I think at Murphy Insurance, they added to the back, and there were issues, I would say, about their lighting, you know, their lighting for that, that should have been addressed by the design review board, you know, this was before the design review board, and, you know, the planning board, you know, but related to the, how did the abutters feel about the addition? How did they feel about the addition of lights on the outside of the building? So, you know, I think that there should have been, you know, that was an example, you know, it was before this, but if that came up again, you know, I would think that we would want to have a hearing with the, the residential abutters to that business. How do you feel about, you know, the?
Well, but in that case, I mean, what's a planning board's hook there? I mean, I, I think you're, you're right, because ZBA ought to be looking at the design review input, but in, in that scenario, I don't know where the, where the planning, unless they were changing the nature of their, their, their pre-existing business.
You're right, if, if it's not changing the nature, then it's not, it doesn't fall under the planning board.
Would that require safe plan approval, though? Did that require, because if it goes before Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen
would be seeking, well, they should be seeking advice from planning board, so maybe that's how it gets triggered in that situation.
So, but in addition to a business, like if you're adding square footage, that one, you know, require more of a special permit, or as long as it's?
Well, in the scenario we're talking about, we're talking about a non, pre-existing non-conforming business in a residential zone that doesn't have a special permit, that's not required to have a special permit, they're really acting under the purview of the ZBA, approving their continuance or expansion of their non, non-conformance. So it's an issue that doesn't typically come before the planning board, now, if they were trying to change the business that they were gonna have on the site, or if they... It's, it's, it's fine.
You know, if the design review board is getting involved, you know, there's just all these important things that have been, been built in. You know, that are important. Especially, you know, a lot of these things were built in, thinking about, you know, like fencing and screening is thinking about resident, you know, business next to residential, and how do you make the business as good as it can be and not have it affect, you know, the abut, the residential abutters, I mean, that was, you know, a big part of, you know, I thought the criteria, you know, how is parking working? You know, it's not just, you know, for the drivers, but how is it affecting the neighbors? Service areas, utility and equipment. I mean, I guess, I guess if, you know, the ZBA has a hearing, and, you know, that's the opportunity for abutters and the design review board.
But with the, use like the Clinton Savings Bank example, there's an instance where the planning board is gonna be involved, but the applicant might want to start with the ZBA and know that they have whatever variance they need before they're, they're going to other boards, so if they start with the ZBA, are... Is it fine for the, for the, the ZBA to activate design review?
That's what the design review rights look like right on the front page.
Yeah, and that's the way.
ZBA wants some, ZBA gets some.
I mean, any of the boards can request a written report from the, from the design review board.
Seems, seems like a good idea. So maybe instead of saying, "The planning board, Board of Appeals, and Board of Selectmen," maybe it should say "and/or", meaning that, you know, the boards can act together, or any one board could request the input of the design review board.
I mean, to be quite honest, I've already had discussions with Clinton Savings Bank, so I had to give him some direction, and I told him, "If you're starting with ZBA for your variance, is ZBA can trigger the design review."
I mean, that's, that's, it does say that.
So, that's kind of what I've been saying already. But, I guess, my other question then is, can I say, because he was kind of coming at me with, "Can we sit down with the design review board first, before we meet with any of the permitting boards?" And I said, "Well, I, I believe it needs to be triggered through one of the three boards, you just can't."
Well, I think we already told Clinton Savings Bank to go talk to the design review board.
Did you?
Then they came to see the planning board six months ago, or a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we did, we definitely.
Informally?
Informally, yeah, but.
So they can do that informally, they can go before?
I mean, ideally, they come before a board, and the board says, "Okay, here's the process," and we, you know, you should start talking with these people.
So what, but what's the benefit of doing the informal?
Well, you know, you spend a lot of money to design something, you kind of want to know what's gonna work. So there's a lot of value, I think, in informally kind of feeling people out and saying, "This is what we're thinking, what do you think?" You know, to get, not, not to get to a, but before, to make a submission, you know, you've already designed, you've already done calculations, and, you know, you, you're pretty far along, so.
The boards go, "Nah, nah, nah, this is, start over again."
I think there's, especially with design.
So informally, they can, but for a formal submission, they would still need to go before the three boards before they could do that. Like, they can't start with a formal submission to design review.
No, it's gotta go to the board that's, that's acting on it, yeah, submission is to the board, yeah.
I think it just, it gets hard to know, I guess, it's hard, you know, if they're not filling this out, and they're not going through a process, it's hard to know, you know, what, what they're doing, you know, what, what advice, if, you know, if it's not an official process where they're getting, you know, checking things off and stuff, you know, it's hard to know what, what's being said and what's.
Well, they're a real board, and they should be, they should have meetings in minutes and use.
And over the people who raise a report to the board that asked them.
So I, I think, you know, they, there was that informal process with the, the owners, the previous owners of the salt box. It seemed like they were going through, so it's just, you know, I, it's, you know, that, that previous owner was either just not, you know, really not listening. But it was just hard, you know, I don't remember anything getting generated out of that, like, you know, we met with them.
Well, we saw at town meeting the pictures.
Yeah, I know, but I was like.
Seen before.
Yeah, I don't, it's not about controlling, it's just like, what's going on? You know, there were no reports. You know, there were no reports kind of generated, or-
Well, I mean, you know, one thing we could say is that there ought, there ought, there ought to be feedback back to the board, whether it's the planning board, or the ZBA, or the selectmen, from design review. If there are meetings being held and there's input being given, there ought, you know, there ought to be some feedback back.
So where are they? Are they waiting for the demolition delay?
I, yeah, I don't think that's up until June, but they would like to start the permitting process. Can they do that, if they're in demo delay?
So they were, they're starting, they're supposed to be working on a compromise with the historic commission, or? What are the-
I'd need to talk to the history, I, I don't know where that, where they are with the, with that.
Larry, do you know?
It sounded like from their presentation that, you know, they had no option but to demolish.
Right.
But the question is-
I mean, it's sort of six months when somebody, they-
They might be able to move it.
Move the, move the building or find somebody who wants, wants the building, but, but there's no, I mean, the applicant doesn't, they have to reach some agreement with the, the historic commission, but the, the, the cooling off period is what's, is what's built into the bylaw. But I, but I don't think you, you can start, knowing the permitting process is gonna take a while, no matter what, you, you don't have to wait till the end of the DAT before they, they start the, the ZBA process.
Okay.
I think whenever possible, wherever logical, that multiple boards be running their own set of issues concurrently, for any sort of a thing.
Well, we've never had, you know, we've never, the design review board's never like run through, through the whole process, so it's, it's still-
Design review helped, was it Bolton Capital Group now?
Oh.
What was the whole barn renovation, I thought they were involved with that.
That would've been the Board of Selectmen? I don't think so. There any others, so?
So where do we stand with these rules and regs? Can I officially use them, or? I mean, they've already, it sounds like they've already been sort of adopted anyway.
Some, you know, minor issues, like you pointed out, pointing to the old bylaw sections, and then-
Right.
You know, they're not design advisory anymore, but, the gist of everything seems correct.
Okay, so they can go ahead and use this application even though it's, I know it's not up to date, but none of our stuff is up to date, so-
Yeah, and the caveat that, you know, some of the pointers are incorrect, and, I mean, all, all the important stuff is incorrect.
Do you have a copy of this that we can edit?
Uh, I, yeah, I do, I have a Word file for this.
Okay.
I like that it just returns the design review board and says the advisory team, so it's already partially updated.
Yeah, it'd be great to see it in action. Any other, let's keep them.
So Conservation Commission wanted to potentially set up a joint meeting with us? So I just wanted to get your feedback on that, if that's something that you guys would be interested in doing, to talk about common interests.
Could you read the, read the, the list?
Oh, sure. So I was talking with Carol, there were some things in the phosphored bylaw that I think the Conservation Commission would like to see tweaked, so that's something that they'd like to talk about. Something about model open space bylaw, tweaking the subdivision rules and regs, aquifer protection, non-native invasive plant inventory, and then they're updating the open space and recreation plan, and I think they want planning board input on that.
So are they suggesting that they, for instance, do the aquifer bylaw, or they want us to do it?
I don't know this by, I think it's just a matter of just discussing it at this point.
So, so the question is whether they come to our meeting, or we go to theirs?
Yeah. Yeah.
What was the last one? Didn't we meet a couple years ago?
I think the last time they came here, must've taken them to a different committee.
Well, John has missed our meetings, so, you know, we canceled the last few times, but, um, so what do we have coming up on our schedule?
So, our next meeting, we have a public hearing for the Ascenic Road special permit for a lot at the intersection of Warner Road and Harvard Road by Kendall Homes. John Ritchie's coming in to introduce himself.
So that's April nine?
Yep, that's our next meeting, and there might be a few other-
With the Skinner property?
The Skinner property, he said he would get back to me. He wanted to sort of put together a better presentation when he came in, so he said probably April, he'd get back to me.
What, what is he talking about?
He's looking at doing a building that would include, like, office, office space and, like, a coffee shop kind of thing.
So it must have real plates.
I thought somebody was interested in, uh, somebody was interested in, um-
Yeah, fifty-five plus for that location?
Yeah, during residential there-
That's the real, the real-
Yeah, I wondered, I wondered how, how would the EDC feel about a
Well, I mean, we, we walked, we walked, we walked through that, and, I mean, there's a lot of work that-
The building, yeah.
It's pretty rundown on the inside.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just a-
There's a lot of mold issues.
I can't imagine living in, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it needs a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a tear down, really.
Yeah.
No, yeah, I thought somebody was looking at it for like a cottage over there.
I mean, yeah, EDC-wise, I mean, it would definitely not be good to lose the, you know, three or four, one of the three or four limited business, business zones, that's for sure.
Yeah, I wondered about them, that sounds like-
But, it also is not good to be having.
But what if it was a mixed-use village? It's a good thing, with the coffee shop and some residences and a couple of those things.
I mean, it also, you know, you don't want vacant buildings, so. If we can get more evaluation on any given piece of property, other than mine, then I'm all for it. Right, exactly, yeah. It's just gonna sit there.
Okay, that's good to know.
So, and then I just, do you guys wanna approve minutes this time around, or wait until our next meeting?
How behind are we?
Uh, two meetings.
Two meetings, that's not bad.
So we can do it next time if you want.
So do we, so I guess we should look at meeting dates after, after April nine?
Oh, right.
So instead of having our meeting, we would go and join them?
Is that what?
Does that sound good?
What night do they meet?
I believe they meet Tuesdays, but I can, I can send an email out with all the information.
So it'd be the whole planning board?
I think you would be just a quorum, right? To go?
I mean, more than married, but you'd need a, a quorum for it to be considered a proper joint meeting.
We don't wanna do it, you know, after town meeting, when you have new member.
Okay.
Just a thought.
I think you do it in June.
So, I'll do it after town meeting, really? Okay.
That's when the phone gets shut off.
That sounds good.
The mail stops being forwarded.
Doug stops, picks up the mail.
The double rings get like, just running around.
I actually spent an afternoon going through my planning board pile. Amazing things to say.
Did you get a, you got a permit or something?
I did, yeah.
Why don't you ski into this house all winter on it?
You already brought in like a huge box.
I know, I didn't bother with anything, and I figured whatever I have, you probably have. Or you don't want.
When it comes to the planning board stuff, Doug is that crazy old lady who keeps all the newspapers for the last, you know, forty-five days.
I did have from two thousand and one, the request from Brian Lafferty to, for all of our private email and everything else that we ever had discussing Sunset Ridge.
Now there, there was a an aggressive developer.
Yeah. And my, my first meeting I ever came to at Plant Senior was in here screaming at the planning board saying, "All you do is roads and drainage, that's it." I'll never forget.
Well, they were opposed, that was Lafferty and, and Plant on the, they come and drive along Harvard Road. They were on opposite sides, and the two most litigious guys, and, but, we dodged a bullet on that, no lawsuit.
Yeah. Amazing.
Thanks.
Back to you.
I'm sure.
A motion to adjourn?
Sorry. Go in favor, so?
Aye.
Aye.